I'd like to call the Stanley County Board of Commissioners' regular meeting to order at this time for July 8, 2013, 7:00 PM. I'd like to welcome everyone here. I recognize that we do have the media with us, Tiffany and Leon. Glad to have you and those of you in the audience and in the viewing audience that will be seeing this on tomorrow night. At this time, I will ask Commissioner Dennis for the invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. God, give us grace to set a good example to all among us, among whom we live, to be just and true to all dealings, to be strict and conscientious in discharge of our every duty, pure and temperate in all enjoyment, gracious and generous and courteous towards all. In the Lord's name we pray, amen.
I'd like to add HP, discussion of HP 1005.
Okay, you may make that a motion. All right, have a second. Have a second. All in favor say aye, those opposed no, and the ayes have it. We can put that at number five, if that's okay, and change five to six. Here and none other, I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended. I have a motion by Commissioner Dennis, the second, by Commissioner Donovan. Any other discussion? Here and none, all in favor say aye, those opposed no, and the ayes have it. First scheduled item is a presentation from the 911 Emergency Radio System Project. Brian Simpson is here to give us a little lead in and I think we're gonna have a public hearing and do some discussion here. Welcome, Brian.
Good evening. Kind of in addition to the radio project that you all have been aware of, with some financing opportunities that we have discovered, and in lieu of all this having to go before the LGC, I believe tonight, there needs to be a public hearing based on this, as well as an adopted resolution to move forward with this opportunity. So I will do my best to answer any questions. That was kind of a very streamlined approach, but...
Thank you, Brian. Andy, have you anything to present at this time before we have the public hearing?
I don't have any information, other than there's resolutions in your packet that has a description. We've done the things we needed to do. Our finance folks are working on the LGC application. This is one of the last pieces. We'll need this along with the updated lease purchase information from Motorola that will go in the application packet. We've already contacted the Legislative Oversight Committee that's, as of 2011, was a requirement. In addition to sending information to the LGC, we had to provide information to the Legislative Oversight Committee about what we're planning to do, financing arrangement and the like. So we've already met that requirement and now are gonna seek the LGC's approval at their August 6th. Hopefully at their August 6th meeting, they meet the first Tuesday of every month. We're optimistic we'll be able to do that. If for some reason they don't feel like we've got, given them the information in time, we'd have to push it back to the September. But either way, I think we're fine with respect to getting everything done with Motorola, if we, whether we hit it in August or whether we have to wait till that first Tuesday in September.
Very good. Anyone else? I would like to back up just a minute. Carrie McDaniel was supposed to be on the agenda, but she, I think her father's sick and she had to take care of that, and so we certainly understand and hope she'll get a good report from that. Just to kind of mention to the public again that this is a project that we've decided to go ahead with in our budget. It's a pricey item, but it's necessary. And at this time, I will declare a public hearing open for anyone who wants to come to speak for or against. We ask you to come to the podium, give us your name, where you're from, and leave your comments in about three minutes. Anyone, tell us if you're opposed to this or in favor of it. And seeing no one coming forward, I will declare the public hearing closed. We have a resolution to consider, so I'll ask, is any discussion before we vote? Do you have any comments? I'll entertain a motion to approve the associated resolution. Have a motion by Commissioner Dennis to have a second. Second, Commissioner Donovan. Any further discussion? Here and none, all those in favor say aye, those opposed no, and the ayes have it. Thank you, Brian. We're gonna move right along with this. Our next agenda item is scattered site housing community development block grant. Presenter's Donna Davis, as utilities director. Welcome, Donna. We're always glad to get these block grant funds.
Good evening, commissioners. Mr. Chairman, I do have for your consideration tonight, an award of $225,000 for the 2012 scattered site housing community development block grant. This grant will provide assistance to repair selected homes of qualified recipients throughout Stanley County. There are three items that need your attention this afternoon, this evening. First is the approval of a package of policies, procedures, plans, resolutions, and ordinances for this 2012 CDBG scattered site housing project. We also would request that you would award administrative services contract this evening and approve the associated project ordinance that will allow us to set up the accounting to receive these funds, funds from the community development block grant. And with that said, I think you have a copy of the policies, procedures, plans, resolutions, and ordinances?
I think we do.
Okay. I'd also like to mention that as far as the administrative services contract is concerned, we did receive bids on Friday, July 5, 2013. They were due, some were submitted prior to them, but they were due no later than Friday, July 5, 2013, for these administrative services. This was posted both in the newspaper earlier this summer and also in the interactive procurement system for the state. It's an online purchasing system where bids can go out through the state or can be posted and folks can see it throughout the state for bidding on these proposals. We received two, and I would be requesting that we award the administrative services contract this evening to the Wooton Company. And then again, we would like for you all to approve the associated project ordinance and budget amendments that would be required to set up this account for receipt of funds from the CDBG grant.
You want to have a question or comment for Donna? And you have the proposal from Wooton in your packet. We just handed that tonight, so... All right, what's the pleasure of the board? Can we do all these in one motion, or do we have to separate them?
You could do them all in one motion, as long as they're specifically identified what you're approving, which, I mean, they're listed here, so I think...
Let's take them one at a time.
It's up to you. I mean, I think you can do it as one, but...
All right. I'll entertain a motion to approve the package of policies, procedures, plans, resolutions, and ordinances for the scattered site housing, also for an award of the administrative services contract, and to approve associated project ordinance and budget amendments. Motion by Commissioner Dennis, and second by Commissioner Shudo. Now, any further discussion? Here and none, all in favor say aye, those opposed no, and the ayes have it. Thanks very much, Donna.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, while Donna's here in front of us, I would like to commend her. A citizen called me the other night about 10:30, following a lot of rain that we've had in our community, and we've talked about the emergency services folks and the good work that they've done, especially back during the storm. But when we have monsoons, it seems like we're having right now. It seems like it just never goes away. And the citizen called, and Andy was actually out of town, and I wasn't exactly sure who to call, but worked through the 911 system and ended up with talking with somebody in utilities. And then Donna called me, I think it was about midnight that night, to assure me that things were being worked on and under control and that things were being accomplished. The issue continues, it seems like, and there'll be some things that have to be done with DOT, and hopefully we can get that accomplished. But I wanted to just commend you, since you were here, Donna, for not only doing an excellent job, but also in the way that you handled the citizens. And when I say handled, I mean served the citizens well. They were satisfied with what you did and were pleased with your demeanor and so forth, and I just wanted to say thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Donovan. We appreciate the support of the board always and the citizens who let us know what's going on, and they were very patient with us, and we appreciate that. Thank you.
I'd like to follow up on that, because I've had some conversations with folks out there with this, and they all spoke very highly of how you handled the situation, and so you're being commended for that. Thanks for bringing that up.
And please pass along to your staff as well, Donna.
Exactly.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next agenda item is a recognition of our finance department for certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting. I received this letter some time ago and just waited to get this on the agenda. But the letter says, "We're pleased to notify you that your comprehensive annual financial report for the fiscal year ended June 30, 2012 qualifies for certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting. The certificate of achievement is the highest form of recognition in governmental accounting and financial reporting, and its attainment represents a significant accomplishment by government and its management." And I'd like to commend Director Toby Henson for the hard work he does, and I'd like to take this opportunity to say that finance department is why Stanley County is in good fiscal condition, because without them advising us and telling us things we can do and ways to go, and I'll also add into that with our county manager, we're not that smart, but they make us look good. And I just want everybody to know that. And Toby, congratulations. And I think there is a certificate that you can give him, that you can, I don't have it with me, but it did come.
Yeah, there's a certificate. We actually get a plaque. It just, those usually take a little longer, and we actually hang those on a wall in the finance department, sort of the wall of fame in there with all the certificates, because this is actually the several consecutive years that they've won it, so...
And again, thank you, Toby.
Thank you, Doug.
Our next agenda item is to select a voting delegate for the NCA-CC Annual Conference. That's our state association annual conference, which will be in Greensboro this year. And I do plan to attend, but if someone else is planning to attend and wants to be the voting delegate, I will bow out of that position. I think we have a motion by Commissioner Shudo and a second by Commissioner Dennis and Donovan, and everybody's always said, yeah, any, all in favor of the motion, please say aye, those opposed no, and the ayes have it. I will probably represent you at the annual conference, because I had planned to go. And anyone else is welcome to go, so just let Tyler know so that she can get your registration sent in by the deadline. All right, we're down to item number five, and it will be a discussion about House Bill 1005, and the floor is now open for comments or discussion.
I just want to mention this about HP 1005. I think it's a pretty significant and important bill that will have an effect on Stanley County for years to come. And as it does change, how many people, people vote for on both the school board and on the county commission? As you know, adding two more county commissioners is gonna add about $45,000 approximately to our, you know, what we have to spend every year. And, you know, that means in 10 years, we would have spent $450,000 on this. You know, as we're financing a new radio system and we have other expenditures, it's probably money that could be better spent. But, you know, I went up to Raleigh and talked to Senator McLaurin, got me out to speak in front of the Senate State and Local Government Committee, and Representative Burr was there, and he gave his brief talk, and then I talked, and it passed with a close voice vote, you know, that is moving forward. Senator Hartzell actually had recommended that perhaps it could be put back to a committee, another committee, but since it's going to the education committee, they felt there was a chance for, you know, for more discussion on it. And I believe they're gonna take that up, I think tomorrow at some point, and then it'll go to the Senate and the House. Anyway, it was changed from, right before I got there, about an hour before, I got there about an hour before the committee meeting, and Representative Burr did change it. He did put five, y'all familiar with how he changed it, which made it a little better. But what I would like to propose, because when I was up there, I saw where High Point, High Point's doing something to change their voting, to change the way they handle their local elections, and that was in House Bill 468. And what they're doing is they're allowing the citizens to actually have a vote on it. So I was thinking, you know, this is, this is pretty, this is pretty huge. And I was thinking, what's wrong with democracy if you allow the citizens to vote on it, especially since this thing, you know, a lot of times with local bills, you know, they start at the local level and go up. This started in Raleigh and has worked its way down. So I'd like to maybe, what I'm proposing, well, I don't think anyone else wants to talk before I propose what I want to propose. But I, go ahead.
Anyone else have a comment? First of all, I would just make a few comments. I think the number 45,000 is not representative. It's the average of the commissioner's salaries now. Also, when you talk about cost of something, you don't talk about the cost without talking about the benefit. And even in business, people buy a piece of equipment, they consider the cost, but they also consider the benefit, and they weigh those against each other. And I think the benefit, the cost of this and the benefit of this is that we get representation for the entire county. In the past 20 years, there's not been a representative west of Bear Creek, or west of Indy. For 20 years, the towns of Oakboro, Stanfield, Locust, Richcrest, those communities have not had a representative they can call their own. Two, the North District, the South District, for those 20 years, has usually had two representatives. And the city area has usually had a couple of representatives. So it's, the eastern parts only had one for a four-year term, that I can research and find out. But, so I think that, you know, the benefit of this means that everybody in Stanley County, every district, gets a representative. So that's just my comment on the issue.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Manager, do you have the map? It's not for us to see, but it is on...
It can be for us to see, it needs to change.
Okay. So that, so that anybody who was watching tonight could see the districts that our chairman was talking about just then?
Yeah, I mean, he just needs to change the camera view that's up on there.
Okay. What I did was I asked the manager, if he would, to put the map up, and the most important thing to me, I think, is that we continue to participate in the process. Because to me, I do agree with one comment that Commissioner Shudo said, is that having served approximately 37 years in local government, I believe that, as an employee and as an elected official, I believe that local legislation should begin at the local level and move to Raleigh to be approved. But at any rate, we need to be involved in the process, and I appreciate the San Antonio Press running the article they did Sunday, which I think described some of the changes that are being made, but there was no map. People don't know necessarily where they're gonna be, what district they might be in to vote. I still, and I spoke with Justin Burr this afternoon, actually, and I've told him, he hasn't yet convinced me that this is the best thing for Stanley County, but even if it's gonna pass, we need to be continuing to be a part of the process and letting our interests be known and things of that nature. The way the map is now, if the citizens are looking at it, they see that District 1 is the western area that you just described, Commissioner McIntyre. District 2 is southern Stanley County, very similar to the, I guess, Stanley, South Stanley School District. District 3 represents really the Millenport areas and along in that area. 4 is Richfield, New London, and Baden, and 5, for the most part, is the city of Albemarle. This is a change from the original proposal in that, the original proposal had four districts and three at large, and the idea there was that the people that were in the district would vote for the person in that district, and only, they would only, that would be the only district person they would get to vote for. So one major change is that now the legislation implies that everybody in the county will vote for every district, and it does, as you say, allow representation from each of the districts, but still, all the voters will be voting for that. The people in the western end will not get to select the person that's representing them. Everybody in the county will, and I think that's an important education point to be The first proposal would allow everybody to vote for really four out of the seven commissioners, because every voter would have voted for three at large in their district, and that way they would have been voting for the majority. The way the new proposal is, is that they vote for all seven, including five districts and two at large. We have been providing information about populations in each district. They are anywhere from 15,000 in the Albemarle District, down to 9,100 in the District 4, which again is the northern end. And so there is some disparity among population in each district, but I'm not sure because of the way the voting precincts are drawn, or the, actually for the school board particularly, the way those things are drawn, whether those numbers can be evened out any with this proposal. The other thing, and I did express this, my interest here to Justin to see if we could change, is that the current proposal has commissioners and school board members, I believe, voted for in every other election, and currently, we vote for three and two, so that we have an opportunity to kind of change the commissioners along. The proposal will allow for five commissioners to be voted in, let's call it, year one, and then in year three, only two, and then in year five, five again. And I was hoping that we might could look at that and see if there's a possibility that we could make that four, make a recommendation that be four and three, if at all possible, because I think what we've experienced, those of you who have been here longer than me, and me as well, know that it's important for continuity, but it's also important for the people in the county to be able to send a message as to what their most important and critical issues are to move forward. So again, I wish that the process was different, but if the process is going to continue to move forward, I hope that we, as commissioners and the citizens at large, will continue to let their thoughts be known about this. It is significantly different than what we looked at a month ago, or two months ago, actually, I guess it was, when we voted to, that we did not want the commissioner's numbers changed, but this is probably going to be taken up by the education committee in the Senate, either this Wednesday or next Wednesday, and then it will more likely be approved by the Senate, which makes it law at that point, before we have another meeting. And I just wanted to make sure that the citizens were aware of what was being proposed, as I understand it. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, anyone else?
Yes, I would. Mr. Chairman, I don't, I don't want to say I do disagree with you. These districts is drawn up, but then when you go and vote on everyone in every district, as they used to have these district lines, it's just have seven people, because everybody's gonna vote on them anyway. And how long have you heard, ever since I've been involved in politics, when I started running, and I wasn't involved until then, that's been nine years ago, if you're a registered Republican, you don't worry about anything till what they call West of Bear Creek speaks. And I, saying I don't live west of Big Bear Creek, but I was raised right, where Josh is, and I was raised right close to each other, and I consider myself a western Stanley person, and I have to, because I got a woman from way on out there, and, you know, she's sort of like Duck Dynasty, Mr. Fields, when Miss Kay's happy, everybody's happy, happy, happy. So I just, I think it's a sort of a practice in just making it more complicated and growing government, and I just, I just wish it could be voted on by the people and start from here and go up instead of top there and go down, and I'm just not happy at all with it.
Anyone else?
Yeah, just want to make another, another comment, is that, you know, Representative Burr in the paper, I believe his comment was, he just wanted to make sure that everybody was represented around the county. I was thinking, that comment is kind of like an insult to not only this commission, to all the previous commissions, saying that they've been favoring one thing or the other. As long as I've lived in Stanley County, I've not heard, you hear a lot of complaints from people, but I've never heard that any of the commissioners favor one area from the other. And he pretty much said at the, at that committee meeting, that all of us are living so clumped together right now, there's no representation everywhere. And I know Josh is down in the West Stanley Rotary Club and has a business down there, and like I said, you've been out west, and I think Jan lived...
I lived in Norwood.
I lived in Norwood, and, you know, it's just the way people have voted on. But what I would like to do, I mean, it's pretty much, if, you know, it's on a track to go through, what I would like to do, I would like to see the citizens have a chance to vote on it. And my proposal is just that we make a motion that we send a, that we send an email to Raleigh. And by the way, Senator McLaurin, he's kind of withholding off on this. First of all, I don't see the urgency in getting this done in 2014, because once this is done, it's gonna be there for a long time. So I propose is sending a message to Raleigh. Number one, allowing the voters of Stanley County to make the ultimate decision on HP 1005 by placing it on the November 14 ballot. Number two, changing the implementation of the bill, implementation of the bill from 2014 to 2016, as to allow a proper public debate on the issue, and have the citizens of Stanley County vote on the matter in 2014. And three, splitting up the two issues for a referendum. In other words, allowing the citizens to vote for increasing the Board of Commissioners and decreasing the school board with separate votes, because they are two separate issues. And I think a lot of people agree that maybe the school board needs to be reduced, so it's two separate, two separate votes, two separate budgets. So that is my proposal, to ultimately let the citizens decide what a true democracy would be.
Was that in form of motion? Have a motion by Commissioner Shudo and a second by Commissioner Dennis. Any further discussion?
I do have one more I would like to make. Concern of this matter, it seems to be a major issue because of the cost to accounting. And I'm a little bit concerned about this $45,600 per year for two people. I was a little bit stunned when I found out that one salary would run around $23,000, some odd dollars. Sir?
Total compensation, that's not salary, because you got, you got your health insurance and...
It's payment, it's payment, but one total compensation. I'm wondering, you know, shouldn't we not have a study made of what the county commissioners do receive, either salary and compensation, to see what adjustments might be made as far as relieving this responsibility of the $45,600? I just feel like, I feel like that when I saw this, it really bothered me a great deal. So I don't mind giving up something, I don't mind helping out as far as the compensations that we get in order to bring this about, and I don't mind that, I do not mind bringing a vote to the people, I don't mind that at all. But at the same time, there's an issue here as far as the compensation, and I don't mind, I just, I have a problem with it.
But that's in the House, but that's brought up by Commissioner Shudo. That's part of it, so it's...
But it's not in the legal.
But it's in part of the discussion.
In part of the decision-making process.
I'm not really in favor of delaying and necessarily this process unless that is what the legislature takes up. What I do feel like that we need to do, though, is exercise our opinion, and I invite the citizens to do that, to let Representative Burr and Senator McLaurin know where they stand. I think it's very important for us to do that. I'm not interested in voting for a delay or a referendum necessarily, if you postpone. But I do feel like that, as I said before, it's important for us, for all the citizens to know what's going on and to be a part of that process and allow them to do that.
Any further discussion?
Yeah, just my concern is with that, is that I don't think there's enough time to get this through, because they're trying to ram stuff through in Raleigh right now. because they're trying to ram stuff through in Raleigh right now. And there's really not that much time to really have a public debate on this issue and get the word out to them. And that's why I don't think two years is a long time to wait to get something that's gonna, once it's changed, it's, it's gonna be there for a while.
Then I think that's the message that we need to send and, uh, you know. Right, yeah.
Can, can I amend my motion?
I have one more matter of motion. Since the, I, I don't, I don't understand the opposition to district representation, or whether they do not. I'm not sure why, I cannot address why people from the western part of the county have not filed for this office. But we have had people file for this office in the past, they've been beat in the primaries. So I don't know, so we can't say that they, they, they don't try to file for, for representation. But at the same time, I have a problem with, I don't, I'm just running through, railroaded this thing through tonight without giving some thought. I received this today, that's when I got my amendment out, so I got this today, I haven't had a chance to really absorb exactly what you're asking for.
Basically, what I'm asking for is that we allow the citizens of Stanley County to make the ultimate decision on this matter. And I know one, one of my concerns is about the district voting, is that the lack of, um, our ability to vote for, for all of our, all of our, um, representatives. Because in this, in the last five election cycles, every single at-large race was contested, where people had a choice to vote for the people, that's in both the school board and with the county commissioners. And of the nineteen school board elections, in eight of those, candidates have run uncontested. And, um, the citizens have not had a right to vote for that person. I know you could say you could have a right in candidate, but realistically, with the thousands, you're not gonna have a right in candidate. And we've had one person out on the western part in the school board who's pretty much been running unopposed for, for almost forever. And then that's why, the, um, one thing about the, concerns people about the district voting is that you get one candidate in there. And probably that, my, my guess is, and I'm just predicting, that the first election cycle will probably be competitive in these district races. But after that, you'll get somebody entrenched in there, and, you know, people be, you know, run unopposed.
But that has been changed, it's gonna be with countywide vote. Everybody in the county gets to vote for all the districts, so it'll be harder to do what you're saying.
No, it'll be just the same, because, just because, because you have to have a candidate running from that district. What I'm saying is that, I'll give you, is Melvin Poole, for example. He's the only person running from that district every single election cycle from, um, for the school board. So no one has had a chance to vote for him in or out for years. And I'm afraid that will happen with the.
They've been voting on that, that way forever since the school board.
I know, but what I'm saying is that.
Well, it's not his fault that somebody does it, yeah.
I'm not saying, I'm not saying it is his fault. I'm just saying the reality is, there's been eight of the nineteen races in the school board race all around the county. You've had one candidate run for those seats, and they pretty much get a shoe in with people not being able to vote for him, because, because you have to live in a certain district to, to vote. Anyway, I mean, whatever y'all want to do is fine with me, I'm just trying to give it my best shot here.
Any further discussion? We have a motion in a second, uh, to send a, an email. You want to amend your motion?
To perhaps change, change the election cycle to four to three. That's what somebody said, I think people liked, instead of having, yeah, instead of having five, five and two, to have a four and three, to have a four and three. And that's, that's the amendment to, to add to that. A referendum, yeah, with those issues on, and then that they would change the, um, election terms to four to three.
Got you.
Should I ask my question?
All right.
Write that down, so I can read it before I vote on it.
Good idea, because I can't remember the replay.
Mr. Chair, I, I felt mention one other change from the time that we had this presented to us. And that was that, um, when we had four and three, excuse me, when we had, um, yeah, four districts and three at large, the proposal at that time was that the three at large would run for two-year terms. That is another change. Now all seven do run for four-year terms. And again, I'm just trying to share that with, the information with the citizens, that, that there is a change in that. Whereas before, it was two years, uh, for certain members and four years for others.
Right.
Now they all run for four years.
Right.
Because, because it may not be eligible. That we, the electorate, that the electorate, the electoral vote for four candidates in one, one election cycle and three candidates in the other, for both the school board and the board of commissioners. And if, 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 if you need a translation, I'll, I'll. Well, the highlighted part is what's in the email, but just what I handwrote down there on the back. The highlighted part is what's in your email.
Okay, I'm gonna read the motion back and make sure I'm correct, okay? The motion on the floor is allowing the voters of Stanley County to make the ultimate decision on House Bill one zero zero five by placing it on the November two thousand and fourteen ballot. Changing the implementation of the bill from two thousand and fourteen to two thousand and sixteen as to allow proper public debate on the issue and have the citizens of Stanley County vote on the matter in two thousand and fourteen. Tyler, I'll let you have this. Splitting up the two issues for referendum, in other words, allowing the citizens to vote for increasing the Board of Commissioners and decreasing the school board with separate votes. That the vote, I don't think I need electoral in there. That the vote for four candidates in one election cycle and three candidates in the other for both the school board and the board of commissioners. Yeah, that the elec- that the vote, I'm gonna mark out electoral, I think you need that.
The email that we're sending, the motion, the email that we're sending to the representatives, which representatives is this going to?
Senator McCord and Senator.
And is this in the form of a suggestion, or what is this?
Basically be a suggestion, just like it was the last time, when, the same thing we did last time, when we voted three to two. That was pretty much a suggestion also, wasn't it? Motion of the board.
Motion of the board.
It'd be the same thing, it'd be a motion of this board, Josh, if it passed, if this motion passes. It'd be a, I would, you know, staff would articulate that a motion was voted, voted three to two, or, um, to.
That's not my question, but my question is, when it passes, what is the, what will the representatives receive from, uh, a suggested procedure for the districts, or is that what it is, a suggested? So it's not.
And that will be in the form of email, right?
Yeah, that'd be the most expedient way to do it. I can, I can certainly put in a formal letter and send it, but by the time it gets there, the thing may already happen, so.
Okay. All right. Everybody clear on the motion? I think I am. That was, uh, the motion was Commissioner Shuto and the second was Commissioner Dennis. All in favor of the motion, say aye. Those opposed, no. No. Motion, show of hands, all in favor, say aye. Those opposed, no. Motion fails, three to two.
Mr. Chair, I would like to say again, though, that this bill is probably gonna be acted on in the next ten days. And I would encourage citizens, if they have feelings about it, to let Representative Burr especially know. He's, he's the one who has, has proposed this, he's the one who's asking for input, and it's up to the citizens of Stanley County to, to still exercise their right to let him know how they feel about this.
Thank you, Commissioner Dunham. Okay. Next item is consent agenda on it. We have the minutes from, uh, June third, June tenth, and seventeenth, and a finance, uh, to accept our monthly financial report for the eleven months ended May thirtieth, first, two thousand and thirteen. Do I have a motion? Motion, motion to approve the consent agenda by Commissioner Dennis, I have a second. Commissioner Shuto, a second. All in favor of the motion, say aye. Those opposed, no, and the ayes have it. Now we come to that part of our meeting, where all of you can come up and speak to us if you'd like. The floor is open for public comments. Seeing none, we'll start down with Mr. Donovan, you have any comments? Commissioner Morton?
No comment.
Commissioner Shuto?
Yes, a couple of things. First, I thank everybody for having a discussion on that matter, I appreciate that. Secondly, Moro Mountain update, um, Moro Mountain, they're still having a lot of problems out there with the trees and, they're, they're, they're still falling. Their new date for opening is August the fifth, that's still a guess. And, um, I know that this week, on the way to work, the workers couldn't get in there, because four or five trees fell on the road leading into Moro Mountain State Park. So they're still falling, and that's one reason they got, got the park closed, is for the safety of the people walking down the trails when they have trees still falling. So August the fifth is the opening date. Just want to give a shout out to Stanley County for Small Town America for the Fourth of July. There's a lot of activities around here. Tiffany actually told me she got to stay home for the first time forever, that didn't have to cover one of those, which was nice, but, uh, it started off at the YMCA, we had about three hundred people at the watermelon run. They came from all over the, throughout the region to participate. That's actually more than double from what's shown up at Moro Mountain State Park when we had it, so that was nice. Oakboro parade and barbecue, the rain held off for those things, and they had a very good turnout for both, both those events. And then at nighttime, they had the, I don't know if y'all got a chance to go, Listen to the Army was a, I don't know the exact name for the band, but the four fortieth infantry unit. And they're very good, and I believe, um, you know, Mr. Rudesel was able to secure them coming in. And that was a very, they probably had about two or three hundred people out there despite the rain. And, um, you had fireworks in both, both Baden and Oakboro on the same night, and both of them were very well attended. So that's, that's what small town America's all about.
Dennis? No comment, no comment. Uh, thank you for the report on, uh, Moro Mountain, uh, Peter. And I had heard the comment that a forester had said that we probably hadn't seen the, the worst of the storm that took down all the trees, because with the ground so wet, more trees would probably fall because they were shaking. But, uh, the watermelon run, did everybody get a watermelon?
We gave, we had ten, we had both watermelon, we used ten of them up.
All right, very good. Anything else? Uh, attorney?
No comment, sir, thank you.
And county manager?
I do have one, uh, comment or actually, um, item for the board to consider, um, later this evening, after closed session. The county has received word from the USDA, you know, um, uh, that's the funding source we've used for the Water and Sewer Authority to do a lot of projects. They've come through with some grant and loan funding for, um, at least a part or phase one of the Baden Water System Rehab that we've been talking about for several years. And so, um, they really would like us to act on that, or at least have the opportunity to act on that before your August meeting. And so I would ask the board to strongly consider recessing this meeting this evening, so that you could reconvene and then go and, um, and then actually recess that meeting to go into a meeting of the Greater Baden Water and Sewer, so that you could, um, you could receive a report from Donna and Alan Hart from USDA. And, and then Donna was gonna be able to provide you with information about the impact, financial impact of what that grants and those loans would do in terms of debt service and those things, so you all can make an informed decision on whether you want to move forward with that project. So I would ask that the board consider recessing to sometime the week of July, the July twenty-second. And, um, that, that's certainly up to you all as to what date and what time you want to do that. But we need to provide public notice of that meeting, and we need ten days, so that's really the first opportunity we're gonna have, is that, that week.
Very good. You want to look at your calendars now and see the week of, uh, of, uh, July twenty-second through the twenty-sixth? And we can meet morning, afternoon, I will not be available on Wednesday morning, but Wednesday afternoon, around two, I'd be available, and any other time that week, so. Does anybody have a date that's not good? Wednesday afternoon, two o'clock? Wednesday afternoon, two o'clock? Okay. No, not yet, we gotta go closer to person. August the, uh, July the twenty-fourth. Twenty-fourth, that'd be Wednesday, this Wednesday week. Okay, uh, I have no comments. Uh, I'll entertain a motion to go into closed session to discuss economic development in accordance with GS one forty-three dash three eighteen, uh, decimal eleven, little a, four, and to discuss records in accordance with, um, GS one forty-three dash three eighteen dash, uh, decimal eleven, uh, little a, one. And also for personnel matter, GS one forty-three dash three eighteen, decimal eleven, eight, is that six? Six, okay, okay, couldn't read my own writing. Entertaining motion for that. Uh, commotion made by Commissioner Dennis, seconded by Mr. Donovan. All in favor, say aye. Those opposed, no. We are in recess, go into closed session.